Okay. I'm going to call to order the Haywood County Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 20th, 2017, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, and we thank you for everything you've given us. We thank you for the ability to gather together in this fine place in Haywood County to discuss the county and its business. Lord, just guide and direct us as commissioners to make the best decisions that we can for the county. Please help us to take care of those who do not have. Help us to provide a safe environment, Lord. Just be with all of those throughout our country that are struggling. Be with our military as they protect us overseas and here at home. In your name we ask this prayer, amen. The first thing on the agenda is the public comment session. And I have quite a few people that have signed up, and I'll call all those folks first. I ask that each of you try to limit your comments to at least three minutes. And then also, I will just say, the last time we were having a meeting, two weeks ago, there was a request that we hold open a decision regarding a request for approval of resolution regarding the Haywood County tax collector position being elected, being appointed rather than elected. So there was a request that we have a hearing, but we decided that there was a public comment, and tonight would be the public comment for that if you wanted to comment on it. I would, basically, I could read the resolution for that, but one of the main things I want to point out is that nothing about this resolution will remove the current tax collector from office. There was nothing that would take place until the end of this elected term. So I just want to make that clear. There's no intent to remove Mr. Matthews at all, but there is, this resolution is a request that the tax collector position be appointed, as it is in 99 counties in North Carolina, just not in our county, and that is it. So I want to make that clear before people get up there and start making public comment. I do not want to deter you from public comment, but just wanted to make sure that you know that. Okay, Bob Clark is the first person.
Appreciate the opportunity to address you. It is about the tax collector, whether appointed or elected, and I'm strongly in favor of it being appointed. Has nothing to do with personalities. In a sense, it has something to do with party politics, and that is, I think it's a position that should be removed from partisan election because you, as the board, have, you know how your task is to set the budget for the year, expecting what the tax revenues are. And if someone does get in that position, and they are falling short in some manner, and again, I'm not directing it to anybody now, but just if they are there, as you said, elected term, they're there for four years. If they're failing you, as sort of are, you're our Board of Directors for the county, if they're failing you, then you can address that. You can call them in. Hire somebody to, you know, help go through and train, or if you have to, then you have to discharge them and move on. So I do strongly urge, make it appointed. There's a reason the other 99 counties out of 100 have done it. I don't think any of them have backed off it. So I do urge you to do that. Lastly, from a personal standpoint, simply like to thank you for what you do. I don't come here that often, but I know, especially from one of you, and used to see you almost daily, that it's a tough job. You have to hear things. And I truly hope that as we go forward from what's happened nationally, that Haywood County will kind of set itself back. We hear all those mountain values from both parties. I hope the mountain values will go back, that we address you respectfully, and we address one another respectfully. And when we disagree, which I'm gonna disagree with you times, and you're gonna disagree with me, and if we don't, neither of us are probably doing our jobs right. But at least if we can do it, and if we can do it in the community with courtesy, and just walk away, well, I'm sorry, you know, we disagree, I mean, let's just get back to that, at least in Haywood County, because we're all tired of hearing it. And again, I thank you for what you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next individual, Zachary Schoeff.
I don't know either one of these men, but back of this, we had so much trouble in the tax office. If you'll remember, a few years ago, we had to put a deputy in the tax office, and nobody worried about us getting, we always elected a tax collector then, and nobody brought any charges up or paid for a lawyer to come in here and investigate. And I can remember two or three times that somebody went across the counter and there on them and everything. And that's the reason we had to put a deputy over there. This is getting to be blown out of proportion right here by, I don't know who, but it's, I'm all for electing a tax collector. That way, you have a representative there. It's appointing people and everything, I mean, you know, we have a bad case of it here in North Carolina, the buddy system, I think, anyway, in a, whether it's a Democrat county or a Republican county, I mean, they're all just alike. And, I mean, I contacted the John Locke Foundation, Carolina Journal, and I told them they needed to check into this, and when I told them the town, I mean, their tax collector didn't spend one penny to be elected, didn't even pay, I understand, his fee to run or anything, and still beat the incumbent, and the first thing the man said down there, Mr. Henderson, the editor down there, he said, "What did the county tax collector do to make everybody so mad?" We have a little control over it if the man's elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schoeff. Myrna Campbell.
She's not here yet.
Nancy Ballou.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have a petition here that some people in Haywood County have signed. We can get more signatures, but I agree with the first man that spoke. This needs to be a bipartisan position. It should not be elected. Obviously, the other counties in the state feel the same way, and we need to have someone that would serve at the county government's pleasure, is somebody that could be appointed by the, by you or by whoever, and that could be, there could be terminated if need be. So I have these here. I will hand them off, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ballou. Paul Jaeger.
Good evening, Commissioners, fellow residents of Haywood County. I am so blessed to live in Haywood County. It's a wonderful place, and we have so few problems that we're here again considering something of major import, whether or not our tax collector is appointed or elected. We were here before, last fall, with time spent on an ordinance regulating outdoor shooting ranges, commercial outdoor shooting ranges, which no one had proposed to build. We have an elected tax collector, by all metrics that I'm aware of, who's doing an excellent job. His collections percentage is good or better than his predecessor, while fewer people are being thrown out of their homes because he's working with folks. Now, I don't really care what they do in 99 other counties, or why they do it. I live here in Haywood County, and you five gentlemen are my Haywood County Commission, whether I like it or not. And I really would appreciate if, at the end of the comment period, one of you would tell me, and tell all of us here, how it serves the people of Haywood County to appoint a tax collector rather than elect one. It's not going to make it any less political. You all have to go and get reelected. Political influence is not removed from the position by making it appointed. That argument doesn't make it. Again, I will really appreciate it if you, the sitting Commissioners, will address my question, how does this help the people of Haywood County? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaeger. Christine Severs.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I want to thank you, first of all, for doing a good job, which you seem to be doing, and I enjoy keeping up with what you're doing. First off, I want to mention, I also go along with those that say it should be an appointed position. It shouldn't be elected. It has to do with a person's ability to be a tax collector. It's not exactly a political, you know, are they good at that sort of a thing? And you, as Commissioners, who work with them, would know, or her, know who is qualified to do that, so I think it should be appointed, and not elected, because most people, maybe not most people, but a lot of people really don't have a clue as to what the tax auditor does. Which brings me to my second question. I'm just kind of curious about what it's based on. Nobody came to my house. I know they supposedly drive by, and I looked at the record online, and they had some misinformation on it about my bedrooms and what the siding on the house was, and my neighbor's house went down, and houses have been up for sale for over a year in that neighborhood, so I wouldn't call it a hot neighborhood. So I really wonder what it's based on. Is it hit and miss, or hopefully, it's not political? But that's kind of my question, if the gentleman speaks about the tax reappraisals. And I, again, want to thank you again for taking my opinions, and I do enjoy living in Haywood County, and it is an important position, because, you know, I live on a limited income, so the reappraisals are an important issue to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Severs. Vicki Gribble.
Thank you for allowing me to speak and for your time in public service. We appreciate it. I'm Vicki Gribble, and I'm blessed to be born and raised here in Haywood County. I'm a lifelong Democrat, and I watch the commission meetings online, so you probably don't realize how many people actually watch you online. I'm actually inspired to speak tonight by someone who spoke two weeks ago, and that was Ted Carr. Ted Carr, as I know, is a Republican, but I thought what he said was really funny, and it really inspired me to come here tonight and speak. Former Governor Beverly Poe said, "The most powerful thing we own is our vote." I understand that by taking away our right to vote for the position of tax collector, it will make it simpler for you, as Commissioners, to oversee tax collections. However, this is not a valid reason, in my opinion, for you to take this responsibility and right away from the people. We are proud that we in Haywood County vote on our tax collector. We understand, and we are glad that we are the only county in North Carolina that votes on the tax collector. Many people, and like me, many people in Haywood County, have family members who have fought for our right to vote. The people's power should never, ever be taken out of the hands of the many and placed in the hands of the few. I certainly respect you all, and I think you would probably do a great job if you appointed a tax collector, but we have to think about our future generations. I'm asking you to seriously reconsider this resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gribble. Next is R.F. Benhart.
Gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to address you. Seems like everybody before me has had an opinion on a tax collector. I really don't have a strong one, but I would come down on the side of an appointed tax collector. That's not my main issue. The previous commission opted to spend $3.7 million on an animal shelter, which I call a pet palace, because it's pretty darn elaborate. I have a question about that amount. Does that include the furnishings and the equipment to make the installation operational, or is that in excess of the $3.7 million? Now, I know we have an outside group who has pledged to raise $1 million, and courtesy of Mr. Kirkpatrick, about six weeks ago, I was informed that they have raised approximately 30 percent and have hired fundraisers to come up with the balance. If they do not come up with the balance, I'm assuming the taxpayer is on the hook for whatever shortfall that there is. If I'm wrong, I'd like to be told, but I don't see where, if they're short, the money has to come from somewhere. It's going to come from this group and everybody else who resides here. Now, a county of 60,000 people, who can spend $3.7 million bucks on an animal shelter, can certainly afford $450,000 for teacher supplements, which is what Dr. Garrett says would take to raise, depending on tenure, a four and a half to a seven percent supplement. We only get one chance with the kids. We don't give them a proper education, or the best that we can, we're all going to suffer. And we do not, I do not think the kids should suffer. They're our future. They're our future leaders. They're future taxpayers, too. Now, Mr. Castator, a member of the committee, checked with 50 people, and 50 different teachers, 49 of them said they would stay in the county for an increased supplement, and primarily, they've been going, the teachers have been going to Buncombe County, from what I understand. We don't have to match Buncombe County, but if we get close, we make it worthwhile for them to stay here instead of the extra travel and expense. Therefore, I would like to challenge you Commissioners to come up with the $450,000, she said $435,000 to $450,000, to institute her supplement program. I think we owe it to the kids. We owe it to ourselves. Thank you.
Monroe Miller.
How do I feel about the tax collector being appointed rather than elected? I was the first to bring this issue to your attention back in August 2014. I asked Robert Edman to justify having David Francis as tax collector on the 2014 ballot in seeming contradiction to the 1971 Machinery Act. You Commissioners, with the exception of Brandon Rogers, Ira Dove, Chip Killian, fought tooth and nail at great expense and time to this county to keep Francis on the ballot, because you did not think he would lose. Killian dug up two local bills from 1931 and 1943, and generated the following opinion: "The exception language means that General Statute 105-349 does not repeal the 1931 and 1943 Haywood County Local Acts. The tax collector ballot item is properly on this year's Haywood County ballot." Then Francis was thrown out of office. It has been unrelenting obstruction ever since against Mike Matthews, headed by Swanger, who is not here anymore. You County Commissioners, Ira Dove and Chip Killian, one of Francis's cash cows to the county and the Van Winkle Law Firm, foreclosures has been cut off by Mike Matthews effectively reaching out to taxpayers to work out payment plans. Foreclosures have been significantly reduced. This investigation slash report by Shannon Spainhour of Davis Hartman Wright leaked to Vicki Hyatt is the latest attempt to smear Mike Matthews. It contains nothing. It reportedly cost taxpayers $20,000. This resolution now before us, calling for an appointed tax collector, allows you Commissioners to throw Mike Matthews out of office and install your puppet David Francis back in, so he can be controlled by Ira Dove, you Commissioners, and Chip Killian, an about-face of what you originally fought for. You are all a bunch of hypocrites. The smart move by Jim Davis would not be, would be not to introduce this resolution into the state legislature, as it will surely meet resistance in the House. I object to this resolution, not because Haywood County should not follow the other 99 counties in North Carolina, but for the reason you are doing this to force Mike Matthews out of office and to install this character, David Francis. I appreciate your allowing time for me to express my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Jeremy Davis.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, all the residents of Haywood County. I'm Jeremy Davis, and despite my haircut, I'm not related to Mike Matthews. I know we look very similar. The, I'm from Bethel, and y'all might have read about me in the Smoky Mountain News, "I O Three Years and Back Taxes." And the Smoky Mountain News article was basically written from the perspective of Mike was giving us, myself and Ken Henson, special treatment because we were Republicans. And I just want to tell you, that's not the case. I make no excuses. I am late on my taxes. Life happens. In the middle of last year, my wife left me and my daughters. She, like most people in this situation, she cleaned out our bank accounts, our savings, took most of our collateral, anything that we have, to provide for ourselves. I run my own business. I operate on cash. I don't have credit cards. A few months after she left, I got a notice in the mail, first one that I had seen, because my wife received all the mail, that the taxes were late. I went in, made a payment arrangement with Mike Matthews. I've worked to pay some of it down. The new taxes, of course, cycled this year. More life happened. Transmission went out of the truck. Roof blew off in the high windstorm. It's not that we were seeking favor, and that's not the case. We weren't deadbeats. We just had some life issues that couldn't be helped. Mike was willing to work with us. On my current path, I'll probably have my taxes paid in full by the end of May. This is a similar arrangement to what I made with, I believe, David Francis. I honestly don't remember. It was 2009, 2010, when my middle daughter had intestinal surgery. Cost $27,000. They were gracious enough to work with us, but we were two and a half years late on getting them paid. We pay interest and penalties. This is why I propose that we keep a human that we can interact with and is accountable to us, the people, not the Commissioners. And that's my comment, and I would just like to see this position kept as an elective position. This speaks as a testament to Mike Matthews, not a detriment. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Terry Ramy.
My name's Terry Ramy, and I've talked to a lot of you fellas individually about this, and I've got a couple of different points that I'd like to make here. In 2014, I was one of the ones that was involved with Monroe on this. We went to election board meetings. We've got, I've got two letters here from the, one from the lead counsel, Don Wright, from the election board. Got one from Chip Killian right here, that both, that all of them was fighting tooth and nail. Y'all, everyone said, you don't remember it. Y'all fought us tooth and nail 2014. I've got the letters. They're dated right here. They're, one from Chip, one from the lead counsel. Y'all went all the way back. If you remember, it took you two months, almost, to find that 1933. We were arguing the 1971, which Ira here was arguing the other day, trying to convince you fellas the other day, 1971. Right here is the letter that says the 1931 and 1943 were not repealed, is the reason they had to keep it as elected tax collector. And I've talked to y'all, and talked to y'all about that. That, all I would like to see is Mike get a fair shake. Ever since the day Mike was elected, y'all fought us tooth and nail before the election, and then since the day Mike's elected, every one of you told me the same thing. It's not a personal thing. It's not a personal thing. Well, why would y'all go, and if this is true, what the mountain air says, that 20,000 or 20-some thousand, to investigate something that come up with nothing? It's been nonstop. It's been nonstop since the day he was elected. And you know, I've took way more than just a few people in there to work with, that had problems with their taxes. And Mike is, every time I've ever called him, he's answered the phone about, almost every time. I've met with him, sent people up here to talk to him, he's worked payment plans with them. That's what, that's what it's all about. The people in this county, own this county, not just a few people. He's worked with a lot of people that kept them from losing their houses. If you go back and check the records, compare them and see, at one time, from what I understand, from what the John Locke Foundation told us at one time, we were number one per capita out of 100 counties in foreclosures. And I understand, that's probably good money. I understand that. But the fact is, why would you want to take people's property if you can work a deal with them and they still get the tax money? I just don't understand this. My problem is, if y'all have been working with Mike, and near as much as you had been against him, we'd probably be collecting way more taxes than what we are. You said something about the other day, y'all gave him a chance to go to school. He did. He had a sick grandparent or something, he seen after lunch, but he went every day till 12 o'clock, every day. If, if what I understand is correct, and you can double-check it, but off of that point, I don't, it don't matter to me whether it's elected or appointed. I just think that y'all ought to be true to the people and be fair. I ask y'all on several different occasions, why don't you work with him and get him some help? He's been down one or two employees, or one and three-quarters employees, every time I've ever asked. Is that correct, Ira? I came and asked you about it. He's been down, in fact, they've hired employees out from under him and put them, put them in other county offices that pay more. That's not his fault. Some of this, I just don't think you fellas understand the whole picture, that what's everything that's going on. I think if y'all would really get back and check into it, you'd see a lot more of what's really going on. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Ramy. Johnny Currie.
My name is Johnny Currie. I'm a resident of Waynesville. I haven't been here for a long time, but when it comes to taxation, I speak up. The word "pleasure" was mentioned here this evening in regard to the petition, the petition that was submitted to Ira Dove. That person in particular felt that the tax collector should work at the pleasure of the Commissioners. I believe that the tax collector should work at the pleasure of the people, not five Commissioners. Number two, Mike Matthews has worked with my business and collected taxes, put us on payment programs. We've worked very well. He has always been courteous. He's been polite. He's been understanding, and I appreciate his efforts to collect taxes. And I appreciate his efforts to collect taxes. Number three, let's talk about the people's right to vote. The right to vote would be taken away from us if you implement this, uh, these measures that you're considering. And our vote is very precious. As someone said earlier, people in our community have died protecting our right, our freedom to vote. And I think it is extremely important. This might, and the fact that 99 counties do it in a different way is not relevant to Haywood County. We are unique. Our mountain values are very strong and we believe in our right to vote. And if the taxpayer, if we lose the right to vote for a ta, our taxpayer, who is to say that you will consider taking our votes away for the Register of Deeds? Ms. Rogers? I have voted for her consistently. She's a wonderful person. She's very considerate. She works with realtors. She works with all of us regarding documentation. But what would keep you all from suddenly to saying, saying, oh, we, we could appoint that person. It would save us money. How about the clerk of court? How about other people? When you start giving up your right to vote, you are placing your freedoms and your liberty in danger. And I definitely would encourage all of you, especially our newly-elected Commissioner, to stand up for the rights of the voters of Haywood County and just totally drop this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Currie. Okay, those were all the requests, the written requests. If anyone else would like to come speak, they can, they do so. I just need to recognize them. Come forward. And if you will, because you haven't signed up and I can't announce your name, if you'll announce your name prior to speaking.
My name is John Gears.
John Gears?
Gears.
Okay.
Uh, I believe the Commissioners should seek to make the tax collector an appointed position. I had a restaurant with 48 employees. An employee missing work or using alcohol in the job would be terminated. I repeatedly told my employees, would you pay a mechanic to work on your car? When he charged you for hours, he did not work, or while he worked high on alcohol? The answer is obvious, no. I went to become the Vice President of a large commercial real estate company. I oversaw all the realtors in that office. They worked with oversight and were required to attend daily meetings and training sessions. Absenteeism was grounds for dismissal. I'm a fan of paying taxes, my fair share, for the common good of the community and the county I live in. Things like Council for the Aging, Parks and Recreation, Department of Health and Human Services, Police, Fire Districts, Libraries, just to name a few. They benefit all of us that some, that sometime individuals can't even see or refuse to acknowledge. People sometimes, in their zeal to advance their circumstances, overextend themselves by speculating on real estate or business opportunities. Times get tough, bad decisions are made. I've made my share. But I never, ever expected someone else to pay for or carry my failed private or governmental obligations. I, it's part of a valued social contract and moral code I choose to follow. My point is, it is not the local government's duty to act like a bank for someone's bad decisions. You choose to be a part of this county. You use the service as it provides. You don't ask the county to act as a bank and carry your debts. Anytime there is the smallest evidence of political favoritism shown in the collection of tab, taxes, it should be investigated, exposed, and not tolerated, period. The Haywood County Commissioners, over 12 years, have, over the last 12 years, has shown a willingness to listen, learn, and lead this county with dignity and generally a unanimous approach to governing. Yet, they find themselves in a catch-22 with the position of the elected county tax collector. The position is elected, yet the oversight is that of an employee who gets benefits, whose performance of duty reflects on the county and its need for the property tax revenue collection. The tax collector is a quasi-employee, but the position is held for four years until the next election with little true oversight from anybody other than a voter. The citizens of 99 other county residents in the state of North Carolin, Carolina have their tax collectors appointed. This eliminates the issues of oversight and cooperation in fairly collecting the taxes we all should want to pay and by law, we are all required to pay. When people vote in their Commissioners, they in effect would be voting in their tax collectors, but with oversight to make sure the job is done, done right with consequences when the job, when continued job issues arise. Thank you.
Okay, would, would anyone else like to speak? I think, Mr. Campbell, then I'll go to you.
I'm Myrna Campbell. I was on the list, but I was a little late getting in, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I come before you tonight to speak in favor of the resolution to change from an elected to an appointed tax collector. However, before I speak to that, I want to say that I'm not here to represent any group I'm speaking on as a taxpayer and a private citizen. My justification for making the tax collector an appointed position, my, my justifications are, first of all, the Board of Commissioners would establish basic qualifications for the job and applicants would be vetted to determine if they meet the qualifications. Secondly, with an appointment, there can be greater assurance for accountability. Thirdly, the Board of Commissioners and County Manager would have oversight over the operation and be able to take corrective action if problems arise. Fourthly, an appointment provides more continuity to the position and the staff rather than having the office, office subject to change every four years. And also, 99 other counties have changed and I can't think of anything that would set Haywood County apart so that if we changed, it would be something detrimental to the county. I, I don't, I, the other counties have done it and I, I think Haywood would benefit from the change. The most common argument I've heard for leaving in an elected position is in a, is that an appointment allows less say, uh, voters less say in the local government. However, you cannot always depend on voters to exercise due diligence in researching a candidate's background and qualifications. Consequently, a candidate can be elected based on false or misleading information or even in the case of the 2014 election, mistaken identity. As many of you know, our current collect, tax collector is not who many voters claim they voted for. He only won by 230 votes. And while we have no way of knowing for sure, it's quite possible that those votes were intended for the other man with the same name. Secondly, I've heard people say that the appointed positions can lead to cronyism and there may be some truth in that, but since collections for the tax office constitute at least 50% of the total revenue stream for Haywood County, it would be in the Commissioner's best interest to select a highly qualified, competent person. They might choose a like-minded political figure, but I believe good qualifications and the ability to do the job would be the primary factors in the decision. I trust that you all would follow a prescribed process and make this decision in the best interest of the county if you choose to go with the appointed, go the appointed route. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Uh, yes, sir.
How y'all doing, sir?
Right.
My family's been here forever.
Please, please state your name, sir.
Oh, Elmer Silvers.
Say it.
Elmer Silvers.
Okay. Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
Yes, sir. My family's been here forever and paid taxes forever. My understanding, the tax collector, he saves people's homes. He gets the tax money. And that's a good thing. People don't lose their homes. My, the tax collector is a very honest man. I understand if y'all take people's houses away from them, you make more money, but people lose their home. Mr. Math, he saves people's homes. I've met with him. He's a good man. Nobody should live off somebody's loss. If you have a man that works for you and you get money, that's all he wants, right? You shouldn't, in my opinion, if somebody's willing to work with a tax collector and make payments, that's a great thing. But if you take somebody's home, they're out of everything. You sell a house and make more money. I ask you to please let this man do his job. And I, I've never got involved in none of this, but he's saved a lot of people's homes. And there's income coming in. My fa, like I said, my family's paid taxes from way back and we will continue to pay. Some people fall on hard times. Mr. Matthews, he works with those people so they don't lose their home. Their children's not homeless. Some of them can't do it and they, they end up losing their home. I appreciate my time, but Mr. Matthews is a good man. A very good man. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Silvers. Okay. Anyone else? Uh, yeah, I saw her in first and then I don't know who had it up, but I'll get back to you. Again, if you'll state your name.
Hello. My name is Adrienne Miletty and I'm all for keeping it an elected position. Mr. Mike Matthews, I've known for a while and I believe, I don't believe that he is a bank carrying people's loans. If he is working with the people and for the people and you're still getting your money, I don't see what the problem is. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miletty. Uh, yes, ma'am.
I'm a retired teacher. I personally think the office ought to be appointed. Continuity is very, very important in making sure that the taxes are collected. I do not know Mr. Matthews, so therefore I know nothing about what's going on. I'm talking about the job and what needs to be done in the job. And a person who is appointed can keep people's homes too. It's not just Mr. Matthews who can keep people in their homes. And, um, and that's all I have to say for that, but I think it needs to be appointed because it's important that we get our taxes on time to do the things that would need to be done in this county. Thank you.
I'm Janet Clark and I think the position should be appointed. The reason I think that it should be appointed is there are certain positions such as the County Manager and I believe tax collector that needs to be at the disposable of the County Commissioners and that a budget cannot be properly drawn without knowing what revenues are coming in. And so in order to project what the county needs, you, um, you need, you need to be able to have someone that's at your disposal. When you have an appointed position, um, then, then you would have the oversight from, from the Board for that. And, um, that's pretty much, keep the budget and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Okay. Anyone else like to speak during the public comment? Okay. All right. If no one else, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the constituent concerns. And, um, let's see. Brandon? Do you have any constituent concerns?
I don't have anything this time around.
Okay.
I was taking care of mine.
Bill?
Same here, but I do want to thank the fire departments that are working on Coal Mountain Fire and keeping that contained. I know that that's a big wilderness area out there and it'd be a shame to have that whole area go up in flames, so I want to just give Greg Sheepy a shout out, but he's doing a good job in the fire department.
Follow-up on some of the broadband issues that we've been working on with Ira and Ms. Stewart. We've had contacts with, uh, what's the, I can't remember the, Plot Creek or the name of the subdivision up there? And had some meetings with them, had some meetings with Charter. Again, it's a huge money issue, but we are continuing to work on it and just wanted to tell and, you know, everyone out there that we are attempting to continue to make internet available to the county. It's a slow process and an expensive process.
Okay. Let's see. Ms. Seavers had an issue about what the property appraisal was based on and we're having a reappraisal report, report here in just a minute, so that will tell you what it's based on. Um, I, I don't know that there's a whole lot that, to respond with all the comments. Sometimes I like to give some type of brief response to that, just to answer questions, but, um, I mean, obviously there's, there's two differing opinions as to how we should approach that and they've presented themselves. A couple of things I would like to, to point out is the fact that, um, you know, the, the five of us are elected and so the people of Haywood County have the ability at any point in time to elect us and to remove us. And, and so the argument as to saying we want to retain the tax collector position as being elected, it, you know, there's some, there's some merit to that, but there's also the fact that the very, very people that make that decision on the appointment are people that you elect as well. So there is a, there's a controlling factor there as to our removal or our election every, every four years. The, and, and as I had said earlier, um, this, this is something, and I have said this in the paper, um, and when, when it's, the statements or at least questions have been made, this is something that has been thought about for a long period of time and it should have been done. Uh, I don't, I, I think there's, there's people here that know that we should have made this an appointed position years ago and we, we did not do so. When this went on the ballot the last time, and I think some of the, the statements that were made about the fact of, I, I want to clear up any arguments we had. The fact of the matter is, is you can still have a tax collector in a county. We, it's, it's still lawful to do so, but as you, if you look at the statutes, the statutes don't even reflect what a- the statutes don't even reflect what an elected tax collector does because 99 counties in our state don't have an elected tax collector anymore. So that is, that's one of the reasons. So we could have an elected tax collector. And when the election took place in 2014, you still can do that. Is that the best practice? Did I think it was the best practice to have an elected tax collector even then? It's probably better to have an appointed tax collector. And the thing is, is, you know, I'm a practicing attorney and we base a lot of things on precedent. And precedent means you follow a certain process that continues to be done over a period of time because other people have looked at that. Other people have considered those facts and that law and they said, okay, this is a good way to make a decision. Let's continue to do that by following precedents. I don't think we can err by saying that 99 counties have made that decision and it's an incorrect decision to make. 99 counties, 99 boards of commissions have considered whether we're going to have an elected or appointed and they've chosen to go appointed. A lot of people, we would say, a lot of people have made a bad judgment. And I don't, I just don't think that's the case. The other thing here is for those people who believe that there has not been an attempt to support any person in any position here in this county, I would agree to differ with them on any position in this county. I don't care if it's the county manager, the present tax collector, the register of deeds. It is our job, no matter what. No matter what party affiliation they have, no matter who they are, no matter what they do outside of being here, it is our job as commissioners to support that. And there may be some people who say that that's not true and that's not correct, but I believe that we have done that. And that's all I'll say about the tax collector. We're going to talk about that in just a little bit.
There was a lot of accusation later in this stuff that is untrue. And are we going to try to refute some of that now? Or are we going to wait until?
Well, I wasn't, I didn't really, I mean, you can, you're more than welcome to say anything you want to regarding it. I just, I was trying to just hit some of the highlights and explain some things because, you know, lots of times you come to these meetings and there's a lot of public comment and then we don't say a word. And sometimes I think that's the best way to approach it. But, you know, when I was the chairman before and now, I tried to explain just a little bit about what's going on so that people are not just completely left in the dark. And bear it in mind, and as some folks would say, that this is just my opinion. One person out of five. And everyone up here has their own opinion. I did want to speak about the, the Mr. Ben Hart's request on the supplements. And let me just make it clear to everyone on supplements and how these boards work. Right now, the county gives the Haywood County Board of Education and the school system a certain sum of money based on a formula that everyone agreed to. And we give them that money. They make the decision on how to spend that money and how to prioritize that money. So we encourage them to utilize that budget and use those monies before coming back to us to discuss certain line items. Because once we get into discussing certain light items with the school board, then we're going to look at their entire budget. And they have agreed and we have agreed with them that this funding formula is the best way to approach it. If the funding formula needs to be looked at, then it should be. And we'll be happy to discuss that with them. No one from the Board of Education has come to us to attempt to discuss that at this point. When they do, we will discuss those very things. I believe that there is an issue regarding supplements that the teachers do need to be paid more money in comparison. We can never meet or pay, and I'm speaking for the school board, it's very difficult for them to ever pay what Buncombe County pays their teachers. But you need to be somewhat comparable and be able to compete. And, you know, as a commission, I believe we will reach out and work with them in a reasonable way. But we will work with them face to face, person to person, and not through the paper. And, you know, not through some type of outside agenda. And we're always happy to meet with people and sit down and discuss with them that. Okay. That's all the comments I had.
I can wait till we get to the point or whatever. I just didn't know, you know, I didn't know when you wanted to do it.
Okay. And we're going to take up the issue regarding the tax, the position of the tax collector being appointed or elected at the end of the, it's the only item on all business. So we'll be there shortly. Next is the administrative agency reports. We've got Vaya Health Fiscal Monitoring Report for December 31st, 2016. That's Julie Dapes.
Good evening. I'm bringing you the Vaya Health Fiscal Monitoring Report. We do this once a quarter as required by statute. In your package, you have their financials through December 31st. Their revenues collected are $191,687,178. Their total expenditures through December 31st, $191,115,000, I'm sorry, for a net income from operations of $571,247.
Okay. And Julie, could you just tell us a little bit about what Vaya Health is? So people in the public here can know.
Well, it used to be Smokey Mountain Mental Health. And they are a, well, I don't know a whole lot about the company itself since they've changed names. But they handle 12 counties, is that right, Ira?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three counties? Twenty-three counties. And most of those counties send them a little bit of money in addition to what they're charging for Medicaid in order for them to help people with some of their mental problems. And I think a lot of these are drug and alcohol related problems that they go to Vaya Health for.
Used to be Smokey?
Used to be Smokey.
Yes, and then they've merged with a number of other groups to the east of us. It's the LME MCOs as they continue to merge, which is the local management entity and the managed care organization for all mental health. This covers all your Medicaid and all of your contingent mental health in those counties.
Okay. All right, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions, Julie, on that? Next is the Haywood County 2017 Real Property Reappraisal. David Francis is coming forward with that. Most of you probably received your new assessments in the mail as I did over the last couple of days.
Good evening, commissioners. Hope everybody's doing very well tonight. At the February 6th meeting, I gave you a preliminary report. Since that time, we have finished up the reappraisal. As you said, notices went out. The notices went out last Thursday evening. We've started getting a few phone calls and questions about those. I wanted to put together for you about how close we are. There's still, you know, the numbers are still an estimate. There's still some things that have to be worked through the Board of Equalization Review. There's pending legislation that I mentioned to the board at the work session last week about veterans receiving an exemption from paying taxes if that passes. So there's still things in the works that will have to be, you know, as we plod through this next process and going through with the informal appeals and then the Board of E and R. So these, again, are preliminary numbers that we have. Okay. Forty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty parcels were reviewed. Six thousand two hundred and sixty-two parcels did not change. Fourteen thousand four hundred and eighty-one parcels increased. Twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventeen parcels decreased. And out of that, that big long graph bar in the middle is 5% graph either way. 5% went down, 5%. That represents about 18,000 parcels of land. Bars to the right of that large graph in the middle are the ones that did decrease different percentages as you go down. The ones on the left are increases that go up. To answer the lady's question that came up is that different properties, you know, receive different grades. And I'll explain that as you go through, that may change the values to that. Over the, this is a graph of new home construction in Haywood County without the town of Waynesville. As you can see, there was 129 homes in 2016. This is new construction that were built. We're just now getting back to the 2009 level. We had 68 manufactured home permits that were approved last year. So you can see we're starting to slowly come up. This graph here shows houses built since 1900. You can see the deep, steep, steep decline after the Great Recession hit. Okay, when I was talking about how the appraisal process works, this is called CDU, Condition, Desirability and Utility. What makes a house more desirable? Three-bedroom, two-bath, that's a little bit more desirable than a two-bedroom, one-bath. So there's different grades of houses and how that they're desired. And so this shows that most of our homes have, and there's a range, most of our homes in Haywood County receive an average. E is excellent, F is fair, G is good, P is poor, and U is unlivable. VG is very good and very poor. And so these factors are accounted into each home appraisal. And these are a grade of a house that you see, you know, just if you were thinking about your own report card grade. So most of our houses, everything on the left side is C grades. C, C-plus, and C-minus. And as you go around the graph, the other grades that you have in there, D, D-minus, D-plus. And we have some homes that have A, A-plus, double A. With that very small graph, there's about 864 homes there that have an A grade. But most of our homes in Haywood County receive a C, C-plus, or C-minus grade. Okay, here's where we get into the numbers. Town of Canton, valuation was 2016 was 277 million. The 2017 value is 275.8 million. A decrease of 1.4 million or about a half of a percent. Town of Plod, 2016 value, 67 million for '16, 2017, 66.8. A decrease of 1.84 million or about 2%. Town of Maggie Valley, 2016 value, 380 million. 2017 value, 358 million. A decrease of almost $22 million, nearly 6%. Town of Waynesville, 2016 value, this is almost a billion. Went over a billion for 2017, increase of 7.4 million or 0.74%. And a lot of that increase came in commercial construction. And it can be traced back to a new Chick-fil-A, an expansion of Ingalls and Giles Chemical. But a lot of the residential in the town of Waynesville went down. A lot of residential went out, went out in all the municipalities. And for the county, 2016 value was 6.3 billion. 2017 value, 6.1 billion. A decrease of 132.8 million or a decrease of 2.1%. So that's how it all fleshed out. As I said, we still have some, you know, things to plod through. That veteran's exemption could be in the excess of $40 million if that comes to pass. And that will be effective for this year. We don't know the status of that. We will find more about that at the first, we have a Department of Revenue meeting in the first week of March. So we'll learn more about where that piece of legislation's heading. And I said, there's still, you know, things to go through, the informal appeals and the Board of Equalization Review. Okay. That's what I have so far. Be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Just making note, I got my values. We probably had, we looked at around 20 properties and friends and my family and we were, it was kind of back and forth, but it wasn't anything sudden. I mean, it wasn't anything drastic.
Drastic. Yeah. And that's where you saw a lot of things falling. You see that one graph in the middle, 5% either way of 18,000 properties. You see that a lot, so.
And the land, I was really surprised, the land stayed the same on, on almost every piece of land I had.
Okay.
Land was exactly the same.
I know exactly where.
That was in Waynesville, well, that was in Waynesville, Canton, and Maggie Valley.
I've seen that on Jonathan Creek and Arndt.
Some land stayed the same? Or down?
Stayed the same.
Stayed the same.
And then house went down and business went up.
Yeah. You see, you know, some of the, you know, if it's agriculture use on there, you know, you don't really see the direct impact of that.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody that's got questions to definitely.
Yeah, anybody has any questions, please call, you know, the appraiser's phone number, 452-6654. Our staff would be glad to sit down and meet with you and discuss anything that you don't understand in the notice. You know, when you get one every four to five years, it's not something you see. So if you have any questions about that, you know, please ask us.
What's that number again?
452-6654.
David, they can call in, mail, or can they mail something in also?
The informal appeal form actually has an attached portion that you can mail in and, you know, bring in. If you want to contest the value, certainly, you know, the thing you should do is probably call the appraiser that appraised your area. And then that way they can explain the form and how it works and the information that you would need that would, you know, help you, you know, seek a reduction. And we've had several people ask for increase already as well, too, that would ask for the increase, you know, if you needed to do that either way. So we need as much information, you know, simply saying that, you know, it's too high or it's too low doesn't give us any evidence to work from. Pictures speak of a thousand, you know, words or dollars in this case maybe that would help, you know, help the appraisers, you know, decide if there is, you know, room to decrease or increase a piece of property.
David, I think you brought up a good point. Since our appraisers don't go inside, if you want to help your cause and you've done some remodeling and all and think the appraisal needs to be higher, that pictures is worth a thousand words. So that would help automatically.
Yeah, pictures help, you know, if you've had an appraisal in 2015 or '16, please attach that. That, you know, we use those, you know, to go by as well as to.
You know, you start thinking about this, you know, both my properties went down, you know. I really don't look at that as a positive. If I ever want to sell, I know the person that wants to buy is going to look at the appraised value. So if you're going to stay in your home forever, you want it to keep coming down. So it's kind of a mixed bag. The way you're looking at it.
And that's what, you know, as I described earlier to the board on February 6th, is that we saw a lot of, you know, somebody having a property that was renovated beside there. Of course, the property next to it did not get renovated. So we, you know, paid more attention to those sales in that area, you know, and reflected those sales prices, you know, after a renovated property as opposed to just a sale that, a property that was not renovated. Just to make sure that nobody was, you know, equally harmed on that transaction.
Okay, so the number, so you received your evaluations. There's a way to fill out the evaluations to appeal. And you do that on the bottom, there's a form. If you feel the need to appeal, either one way or the other, I can't believe people are asking to increase their values, but at any rate, I'll leave that up to them.
Yeah, I might be in that boat. I'm serious.
The most, one of the three important things to look at either in an increase or decrease, if you want to appeal, is to provide pictures. One of the reasons there is a difference in homes is because the appraisers do not go into the homes. And so if there is, a home is updated, they won't know that. If a home is declining and has, and there's a 1960's home or '70's inside and has all the shagged carpet and the different color tile and stuff, they don't know that. So, and I've got something like that. But at any rate, pictures are good. In appraisal, if you've had an appraisal in the last two years, that's a good thing to supply. And if you've purchased a property or closed on a property, providing the closing statement would be a good mechanism also for them to make a determination on whether your property needs, value needs to be changed. Number's 452-6654.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else on that? Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Next item is discussion and adjustment to the agenda. Is any discussion we need to have right now, commissioners? All right. There is one item we need to adjust to the agenda. I need to add to new business a number eight. And that is the Monticove Convenience Center. We need to discuss. We need to discuss some changes with that. Okay, with that, we'll go to the consent agenda. First item is request approval of February 6, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, deletions to those minutes? All right, if not, we'll move to a crest, request approval of 2017 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. We have Judy Hickman, who is our tax assessor. Come on up, Judy.
Good evening. I'm requesting the approval for the refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Don't have anything to report outside of normal business.
Okay, any questions of Judy? All right, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Next item is request approval of 2000, of January 2017 tax collections update. Mike Matthews, tax collector. Morning, Mike, or evening?
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current tax collection rate as of January 31st, we're at 90.95. We're up about 0.35 percent from this time last year. And our delinquents, with the rollover that we just had from the 5th, we're at $4,690,192. As far as collection was, delinquents, year-to-date, what was collected on the delinquent side, we're at $811,932.96. Actually, we're about $132, uh, $132,882 up and 38 cents.
Okay.
So, our delinquent amounts, we've collected more year-to-date than we did this time last year, $132,000.
Any question? Okay, all right, thank you, Mike. Next, next item on the agenda is request approval of budget amendments. Julie Davis, I'll let you announce each one and not do that myself.
Okay, I've got four budget amendments for you this evening. The first one is a capital project. You'll remember, the county received a grant for about $207 million for the Emergency Operations Center a few years ago, and once they started the project, they realized they needed to put a little bit more equipment in, and we actually transferred some money from the Emergency Operations Fund into this project. We actually transferred $575,000 into that from the Fund 23, our Emergency Operations Center fund balance. Now that the project is completed, we have a little money left over in that fund. We have $66,312 left that I want to, with this budget amendment, transfer back into the Emergency Operations Center Fund. So that's what I'm doing with this budget amendment, cleaning up some of those accounts that had a little bit of budget left, and moving it back into our Emergency Operations Fund.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions?
This is just housekeeping.
It is, yes, we can close the project.
Okay, and just for the purposes of the public, the project was?
Thank you. The project was a relocation and reconstruction of our Emergency Operations Center. It was a large-scale renovation, new equipment, and we actually moved it from where it was over to the law enforcement center, so it's all consolidated.
Okay. And the funds we're talking about here, basically funds that were not utilized for that project, and you're just going back into the EOC, or is it EOC?
EOC, Emergency Operations Center, and those are, the funds in that fund are actually money that we receive from the state off of the phone bills.
Right.
And they're used for particular things in that land, I mean, in that landscape there, and can't be used for other things?
Yes, they are restricted. They certainly are restricted to Emergency Operations Center expenses.
Okay. Next one, Julie?
The next one is a general government, this is our general fund, it's a general government budget amendment. Our Register of Deeds came to me and said that she had a lot of more revenue coming in than we had originally planned, and there are some expenditures from that revenue that she actually has to send to the state. So she was running short in those line items. So when we looked at the money that was coming in from the Register of Deeds, we could find about $150,00102, $150,102 coming in over budget, and I'm using that to help our Register of Deeds Department to cover some of those, the pieces that she has to send to the state. But since only about 50 percent has to go to the state, it did free up a little bit of money that we could cover some other things. For example, in our HR department, we needed a little bit extra money for some drug testing and that kind of thing, and we needed some extra money in our tax department for the revow notices that came, were costing a little bit more than we had planned. And then in the Register of Deeds, of course, we are increasing the amount she's sending to the state. We did have a difference, $36,552 that I am putting into our contingency, increasing contingency, so that we, if we have any issues coming up before June 30th, we'll have a little money in there.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, next, next item, Julie?
The next one is a budget amendment that we do once a year. We, when we make our budget, we budget the merit increases and our unemployment costs into a separate, non-departmental area, and then as the, as the year progresses, we move those into the departments so that we can cover some of these merit increases and unemployment. At the beginning of the year, we don't know where some of the unemployment is going to hit. We don't, don't know exactly that. So what I'm doing is moving the $610,262 that we budgeted to cross off all departments for merit increases, and then unemployment, which we had to pay $20,506 in our unemployment this year, so I'm moving those to cover, move them out of non-departmental into the department so they can cover those expenses.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions about that? All right, and then, and this, those monies go for the merit that the department heads award for their employees-
Exactly.
-for, for their good work. Okay, the next item is special revenue fund?
This is a special revenue fund. Our solid waste management fund has been awarded a grant. The grant is for $20,000 for recycling, but it requires a $58,000 expenditure in order to get that $20,000. After the $58,000, and this is actually for, it's from the Department of Environmental Quality, and it's for blue recycling carts, and we're starting these in the town of Maggie Valley. So Maggie Valley has, has contributed the match up to, to cover that 58 to 50. Town of Maggie Valley's given $34,650, the grant is $20,000, and that leaves about $3,600 for the county to have to contribute to this particular grant.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions about that? All right, if not, thank you, Julie. And the next item is request approval of Health and Human Services Agency contract amendments with Champion Cab Company to increase from $60,000 to $85,000, and elite transportation services from $50,000 to $65,000 for non-emergency medical transportation from federal funds. We have Michelle Hanks.
Yes, good evening. I am here tonight to seek approval to increase the amount on two of our contracts. Both are for non-emergency medical transportation. For one, as you already mentioned, increasing the amount from $60,000 to $85,000. The second one to increase from $50,000 to $65,000, and that is to fill our need until the end of June 30th, 2016. The amount of the increase is in our budget, and there's no county money involved because we do receive 100 percent reimbursement for these services.
Okay, and these services, could you just explain just a little bit about it, then? I know it's for non-emergency medical transportation, but just for the, the public?
Yes, for any type of emergency situations, of course, we want them to use the 911 system, but this is non-emergency transportation. So this is transportation to doctor visits, transportation to dentist visits, any type of non-emergency situation. We have eligibility workers in our agency that determine the eligibility for this. You do have to be receiving Medicaid benefits in order to be eligible for this service.
Okay, all right, any questions, Commissioners?
I think the main thing to point out here, this is going to be refundable, right?
Yes, it is 100 percent reimbursable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is all of the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Okay, the next item is the old business, request approval of resolution requesting the Haywood County tax collector being in appointed position rather than an elected position. Howard Duff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public. I think it's always good to see a packed house where all, all views are vetted. I think that that, as much as anything, stands for the process. When your voice can be heard, I think that is very important. And we do listen, I mean, if you look at all of the ordinances, and someone talked about the shooting range ordinance a little while ago, if you look at all the ordinance that we have passed, and that did come from a lot of citizens coming and talking, if you look at those, we always listen, we always correct, and there's not a single one of those ordinances that went by that didn't have citizen input directly in, into how that worked. I think that's an important point, because one of the things that was mentioned, and I've got the resolution I read the last time, and I'll briefly go through it again, but among the concerns are the right to vote, and someone wanted how it serves the people of Haywood County to do this, I believe was one. And I think also during the few minutes that I'm going to talk, there, there has been some information that was put forward that I don't know, it may be accurate to one, but I don't know that, that it would be exactly accurate to all who reviewed the facts. And I think that that is important, but I don't want to muddy the waters with this particular thing. The resolution is that whereas Haywood County is the last remaining county out of 100 that still elects its tax collector by popular vote, all the remaining 99 counties having accepted, the appointive method is set forth in Section 105-349, which is provided in part since 1971 as follows. The governing body of each county and municipality shall appoint a tax collector on or before July 1st, 1971, to serve for a term to be determined by the governing body, and until his successor has been appointed and qualified. And whereas Section 105-395(c) provides in part, it is in the intent of the General Assembly to make the provisions of this subchapter uniformly applicable throughout the state, and to assure this objective, all laws and clauses of laws, including private and local acts, other than local acts relating to the section of the tax collectors in conflict with this subchapter, are repealed effective July 1st, 1971. I'm going to stop there because it was said that last year, and I was named, fought tooth and nail to maintain the elected position, or a few years ago, back in 2014, for David Francis. I'm actually going to state that that's not what I think the email trade, Mr. Killian's letter, or my recollection would bear out. We were asked a question as to why it was an elected position and not an appointed position, and we answered the question in an email.
Hey, hey, I don't want, it's not your time to talk.
And the letter says, Mr. Miller, see the provision in Chapter 806 of Session Law 1971, when GS 105-291 through GS 105-395 was enacted. And it was basically the provision that I just read, saying that it accepts local tax collectors. It's the exact provision, so the letter is one page. I have put up tooth and nail fights as an attorney, but I can assure you they were more than one page. The next things that I think we need to go forward is looking at the rest of the resolution. Whereas since the passage of the above legislation in 1971, all other counties in the state have repealed their laws providing for elected tax collectors. And whereas Haywood County wishes to join the other 99 counties of the state and follow the instructions and intent of the General Assembly by providing for an appointed tax collector, is provided under the above referenced statute. And whereas the local act, a covered by the above exception for Haywood County, is found in Chapter 557 of the 1943 Session Laws, which went into effect as of the 1946 general election. And whereas the current method of selection of tax collector by election provides little opportunity for oversight of personnel and monitoring of tax collection activities, as the tax collector is not subject to the supervision by the county manager and/or the Board of County Commissioners in the same manner as tax collectors in the remaining 99 counties of the state. And whereas proper oversight of the tax collector and the office of, and personnel thereof, is in the public interest as the revenues collected by that office represent the majority of the revenues needed for the operation of the county government. Now therefore be it resolved, the Haywood, by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, that the Haywood County delegation to the North Carolina General Assembly is requested to introduce and seek passage during the 2017 session of the local legis, of local legislation, which would terminate the effective office now in effect for the office of the tax collector effective upon enactment of the legislation, or alternatively, that the Haywood County delegation to the North Carolina General Assembly introduce and seek passage of local legislation, which would repeal Chapter 557 of the 1943 Session Laws and all of the legislation, which has the effect of providing an exception to the above general North Carolina law, by providing that the selection of the tax collector for Haywood County would occur by popular vote rather than by appointment of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. The appointive method being expressly perverted method as set forth in the above statutes, and that such legislation be effective upon the completion of the current elective term of the Haywood County tax collector. So that's what the resolution says. Now how it serves the people, and I want to discuss a couple of little points. First, although the people get to choose by election now in Haywood County, who sits in the office, what is not chosen is the duties. Those come from the General Assembly. Now why is it important that you know that? Because I'm going to go through again what I talked through a little bit before about 105-350. The general duties of the tax collectors. It shall be the lawful duty, or it shall be the duty of each tax collector to employ all lawful means to collect all property, dog, license, privilege, and franchise taxes with which he is charged by the governing body. See, that's what it's really, really the tension is right there. Can elect who you want. If you get somebody unqualified, they've still got to do these duties, to give such bond as may be required of him by the governing body under the provisions of GS 105-349. Again, the governing body, and somebody said, how does this serve us? Anytime you have a law that sets up a conflict between a set of duties and responsibility to one body without oversight, or oversight methods that take a little more extreme, it's not really in the best interest of the people trying to work within that legal system. Number three, perform such duties in connection with preparation of tax records and tax receipts as the governing body, three duties, three mentions of the governing body, may direct under the provisions of GS 105-319 and 105-320, to keep adequate records of all collections he makes, to account for all monies coming into his hands in such form and detail as may be required by the chief accounting officer of the taxing unit. Chief Accounting Officer is typically the finance officer, that'd be Julie Davis. To make settlement at times, who is an appointed person, by the way, hired by, to make settlement at times required by GS 105-373, and at any other time, the governing body may require him to do so. To submit to the governing body at each of its regular meetings, a report of the amount he has collected on each year's taxes with which he is charged, the amount remaining uncollected, and the steps he is taking to encourage or enforce payment of uncollected And then if you go back to number one, the governing body would have to tell him what steps to do. So when somebody says he's, it's our personal representative- So, when somebody says he's, it's our personal representative, that's not what the general statute said. You see, in North Carolina, we have a North Carolina constitution, and it gives the General Assembly the power to set forth the laws. So, essentially what we have in Haywood County is a system where we have a person, and it could be ten years from now, take this individual out of it, who has a question whether they have to follow the law, or at least acts as if there's a question, as if you have to follow the law. And that's not good for any system of government. To send bills or notices of taxes due to taxpayers if instructed to do so by the governing body. To visit delinquent taxpayers to encourage payments of taxes if instructed to do so by the governing body. So, it serves the people of Haywood County that when they elect commissioners to run their county, they have the full power to do so. That's how it serves the people of Haywood County. The right to vote in other ninety-nine counties is honored in the same way through, through the governing body. And that's where the statutory scheme by the elected General Assembly, I might add, put it. There was a mention about other positions, and it has been in the past. Well, what are we going to do next, the sheriff? Well, the sheriff has a constitutional office with a lot of duties in the General Assembly. This is, and, and honestly, they're not equivalent places. A tax collector in duties and comprehensive scheme is much more like a deputy under a different system where the sheriffs would be all telling them what to do. You have a lot of appointed officials in this county. You have Mr. Killian as attorney, you have myself. I was a social services director before this, and the broad-ranging knowledge, skills, and abilities there, the, the General Assembly and the state decided that you needed to have a certain broad set of skills. Mr. Blevins now fills that role, and that's essentially an appointed position. So, that's why I wanted to bring forth these items to talk about for you and the consideration of why we're putting forth the resolution on whether or not this should be an appointed or an elected position.
Okay, thank you, Ira. All right. Commissioners, have any questions or comments about this?
Okay, yeah, I, I'm going to start. You know, we were asking, you know, why this would benefit Haywood County voters. He just answered it. A qualified person. There's a couple of other things that was brought up. Oh, yeah, Mr. Miller got up here and said that we fought it tooth and nail four years ago, two years ago, whenever it was. Apparently, you all supported the appointed position at that time, and if I had have known it, I would have been right there with you, because I've always thought that. If you read the statutes, it's set up like that. I've had some conversations with the people in the tax office, and they talked about how the statutes were written and written for appointed people or appointed positions, and how difficult it was to try to work, work their way through some of the statutes because we had an elected official. There was some talk about our thing we had to investigate. The complaint, it was a pretty serious complaint. Correct? I don't, you know, everybody's scared to death to talk about it, but it was a pretty serious complaint. If we hadn't investigated it, and it turned out to be potentially truthful, you, the taxpayer, would have paid for it, a big amount. So, we did our job by looking into it to determine whether there was anything. I had, I was accused up here tonight about trying to undermine him the whole time he's been in here, that's false. I think we've set up and tried to do and provide to, to make that office work. I know there's been plenty of times that we've sit and talked, and then, you know, that we've got to do whatever it takes to make sure that this off, office functions correctly. Talked about the potential, we didn't fill a position in, in the office. Well, the state of North Carolina now collects the motor vehicles, uh, property tax on the motor vehicles. We don't do that, that state does it for us. So, that workload's a little bit less in that office. We're accused of trying to be money grabbers and grab what's, you know, whatever's out there that's delinquent. Thank you for the ninety-seven percent of people that pay your taxes. That's pretty obvious, you know, across the state, you know, most people pay their taxes. There's other people that run into bad situations, like Mr. Davis struggles, you know, has some bad things to happen. That's why the tax collector works for him, or works with him to do that. And as long as they're making efforts and doing it, I don't think that we would push foreclosures. Then there's people out there that ain't going to pay them. I'm in business, I help people, I give credit, I work with people, and they, some people that just won't pay. And you got to have teeth to do it, and that's what it is. And if you don't try to collect that, then guess what? It raises the taxes on you. So, and the other thing, and this is all, it's been about, is the integrity of this office. There has been things that have been going on in that office that we are privy to, and the public should be privy to, because it's been pretty much the public knowledge. I have issues with that.
Okay, we've got to change the tape, we're going to change it real quick and, and come right back. It'll take about three or four minutes.